Good evening and welcome back to night one of the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forums for the 2022 primary elections, which will be held on July 19th, 2022. These forums have been made possible by our partnership with both Allegheny Media and WFWM. My name is Jeremy Irons and I am the Chairman of the Chamber's Legislative Committee. Thank you for joining us this evening. It is my pleasure to serve as the moderator for tonight's forum. We are pleased to use technology to make these forums available virtually and also in person. We are also able to offer live polls throughout each forum, which will be available on Facebook. For our third forum of the evening, we will be hearing from candidates for Cumberland City Council. This evening, we have six candidates on the primary ballot for two available seats. After the primary, this field will be trimmed to four candidates. With us tonight, from my left to your right, is candidate Brett Bean, Roxioni, Mary Conlin, Jimmy Firstenberg, Joe George, and William Patch. All candidates will be given the same question and have the same amount of time to answer each question. We will provide a 20-second notice as time is expiring, and we will alternate which candidates answer first. Questions were formulated based on the work and priorities of the chamber with input from the general chamber membership and have not been shared with the candidates in advance. For our first question, we'll be starting with Brett to my left. And our first question is a two-minute opening statement, so you guys will have two minutes for this. Please tell us about yourself and what qualifications set you apart as a candidate for a city council.
Jimmy, I'd like to thank you, the chamber, and all of the partners for having us today. My name is Brett Bean. I come, unlike everyone else on this forum, I am not a native of Allegheny County, but actually of southeast corner of Baltimore County in a small town called Dundalk, which is very similar in its inner structure of a town like Cumberland. My civic pride and civic responsibility started when I was 13 years old, when I joined a young men's youth group called D-Mile that laid the foundation. I also became the chapter president of my local chapter, and then I went on to become the state president, running the entire state of a nonprofit organization at the age of 19, where I basically set up plans, ran budgets, created fundraisers and fun events for the youth group, as well as, we actually made a profit in my year, and as that record has stayed true since, my year was the only year we actually made a profit, and we increased our membership to 2,500 members that year. That started my foundation into the career. I had a career as a cabinetmaker for 25 years, to where I, to the point where it was abruptly ended and I was forced to retire when I tried proving fact people could bounce and failed miserably. I fell 10 feet down a flight of stairs, shattering my rotator bone in my dominant hand, which to anybody else, that would be a devastating blow to end your career at the age of 38. I took that responsibility, took my savings, and I went back to school. I earned myself an associate's degree in mass communications, and I then earned a scholarship, and I got a degree in business communications from Stevenson University. I've also run multimillion-dollar companies as a cabinetmaker supervisor during that timeframe. I look forward to running for candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Rock.
Yeah, thank you, Jeremy, and of course, thanks to the chamber for sponsoring this important event and the partners of the chamber. And I also want to take a moment to thank all the voters that have had confidence in me and put me in office officially in 2018. I was elected, if you may recall, I was appointed to the city council in 2016 to fill a vacancy. The question is, what's, you know, tell me, tell everyone about myself. I hope by telling you about myself, I also get into the second question, what sets me, might set me apart. I grew up on Frederick Street here in Cumberland. I think I know the problems of Cumberland pretty well. I grew up just up the street from the Bannaker Apartments and spent my younger years with getting a real education at Gephardt Playground. And you all that hung out at playgrounds, you know what I mean by the education. After high school, I graduated from West Virginia University. Shortly after that, I spent three years in the Army, including a year in Vietnam as a medic. I came back, got out of the Army, and I came back to Cumberland, met my future wife, Susie Sione. We were married a couple of years after that. We have two children that we raised here in Cumberland. We now have three grandchildren. Almost all of my career was devoted to management, but a little bit differently. I worked with teenagers with mental health and drug problems for 23 years. I was the director of the Jackson Unit, an inpatient unit for drug and alcohol treatment. In fact, I was hired in the year 1980 to actually start that program from the ground up, which was a, you know, what a thing for a career to have that kind of opportunity. I also spent time providing counseling for veterans with post-traumatic stress disorder for about eight or nine years, and probably one of the highlights of my life was that I'm currently chairperson of the Salvation Army's Advisory Board. I'm a member of the Greenway Avenue Stadium Renovation Committee. I manage Little League Baseball here in the area, the same team for 20 years, and I'm still a member of the advisory capacity with the Apertan Baseball Committee. I'm an usher at my church. I've been on city council since February of 2016, and I would appreciate your vote. We have a lot of good things going on in the city, and some of those are going to come to fruition very shortly, and I want to be a part of that. I want to continue to be a part of Mayor Morris's team, and it is truly a team, as Joe can attest to. If I use the word "I" when I talk about city hall accomplishments, somebody correct me, because that's not how it works. It's a true team there. We have a magnificent staff. I'm so impressed by the senior staff and the people I served with on city council. Thank you very much.
Mary?
Thank you. My name is Mary Conlin. I'm also running for, turn the red light on, sorry about that. My name is Mary Conlin, and I'm, of course, a city council candidate also. And I thank everyone who took the time to be here tonight and are watching on the live stream and later in the week to all those who will watch and listen to the recordings. It's a really valuable thing that the chamber is doing in making this information available, making us available. So I would just start with a little question in terms of what sets me apart by saying, what is it, why would you need a retired art teacher on the city council? Because that's what I am. I finished my career in teaching, really in nearby West Virginia just last year, and I was an art teacher. I was a kid who grew up in Cumberland also, ran the playgrounds and the neighborhoods, but always had an interest in art. And I was able to finish my education at the Maryland Institute College of Art, which is really a premier Maryland institution, a global one. I'm very proud of that school that gave me a start in the 1970s, but has become a real kind of global powerhouse now. And for the same reasons that it gave me and my colleagues a start in all the things that we do, and that is that artists are trained to think differently. And the way that we think is in the idea that you must, it's your job to make your ideas visible, to make things happen, not to say that somebody doesn't understand them or isn't able to access what you're saying. It's to make our thinking visible, and I think that is, in a way, what I would bring to the deliberations and the decisions that we make on city council. My focus is very much on a broader and a really whole-population approach to the city, but I've had a little job, I had a lot of small-business experience. When I started out, I worked for my dad's travel agency for about a decade before I shifted into teaching, and then I retired, and I landed back in small business, working at the book center in downtown Cumberland. And I think that might be the thing that pushed me into thinking about a city council run, in that I kind of saw how the downtown district, the neighborhood, works and struggles, and there are struggles for sure, but what they do to make visible their aspirations and keep their motivation high, keep their expectations high, and I, I, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd go on and on.
Jimmy, yes?
Thanks for having me. I'm Jimmy Firstenberg. I've been born and raised in Cumberland, Maryland, and went to Columbus Street Elementary before going to Johnson Heights. I graduated from Fort Hill in 1988. I worked at Coppers for 21 years, and I work currently for juvenile services. On the side, I train not 50s, not hundreds, a couple hundreds of kids in the weight room, some professionals in each sport. I have a passion for the city, and I'm very driven, you know, and I got my brother and sister here with me, my wife, I have five kids, my nieces and nephews are here, and we love Cumberland. We want to make sure, well, we, I want to make sure my sisters and brothers and nieces and nephews do not have to leave Cumberland. I want them to be able to stay here and have jobs. The old adage is you have to make something out of yourself if you leave Cumberland. I want to change that narrative. You stay in Cumberland, you can make something out of yourself. And go back to myself, I am a, I don't know how much more to say there. I, again, I'm a Cumberland guy. I played in every street in this town. I lived in North Cumberland. I lived on Franklin Street, Columbia Street. I moved to Boone Street. I've been everywhere. I know the people of Cumberland, not in the setting I can't relate, but to the people out there I can relate to, you know? So that's what I was going to say, right there.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Jeremy, and thank the chamber and all its partners, and thank the candidates that have expressed interest in becoming a member of the city council. I think it's great that we have this much interest, so many people that want to help the city. That's why we're really blessed. We all love the city. It's a tremendous place to live and work, and we're very fortunate that we have people like this that want to volunteer to help make it even better. I was honored and humbled to be appointed to the city council to serve out a vacancy last September. I was selected out of a field of 10 that had applied, and I was selected based on my experience and leadership skills. I've served these past nine months, and I believe I have the full support of the current mayor and council. I'm married to Sue. She's here in the audience. She's a 20-year employee of the city of Cumberland, worked as a staff accountant. So when you vote for Joe George, the guy with two first names, you're also getting two-for-one. You're getting Sue and I both. We have three children, much like Jimmy here. Jim, my oldest, lives in the area, but has to commute 120 miles a day to his job. Kathy lives in Baltimore, and Brian lives in Harrisburg. I have five wonderful grandchildren. If you have children and grandchildren, you know what that love is, and I want to see them have the same opportunities that I have. I'm a proven business leader. I was very fortunate to be able to be president of a division of a company trading on the New York Stock Exchange, working here, based in Cumberland, but I did a lot of traveling, obviously. I managed a lot, a very large budget and a large staff. I've negotiated with Fortune 500 CEOs, Philadelphia lawyers, and I've worked with large and small business owners. I'm a good listener, and I know how to get things done. But more importantly, I'm a lifelong community volunteer. I've served on many boards to try and make a difference my whole life here in Cumberland. I've served on the HRDC board for 10 years and was part of the executive team on the board that picked the Virginia Avenue location to build their headquarters, to try and help revitalize South Cumberland. I was recently appointed to the Allegheny County Department of Social Services Board. I served on Lyons Manor Nursing Home, which was a nonprofit nursing home, including being chairman of the board for 10 years. I understand the needs of our most vulnerable citizens and our seniors, and I've worked to help them get my hands dirty in the trenches. I've cooked funnel cakes as the president of the Cumberland Kiwanis Club and sausage sandwiches with the Alhambra at Heritage Days. Hopefully, you enjoyed them.
That's two minutes, Joe. Thank you.
Okay.
William?
My name's William Patch, and I am a lifelong citizen of Cumberland. I was born and raised and still live in the same house I was brought home from, from the hospital. I'm married, have two children. My daughter is a nurse, and she works at the local hospital. My son is a graduate of West Virginia University, and as many said, he had to leave the area to find a job. He works for FedEx Corporation, but he is in Pittsburgh, so he's close by. I've been employed by the city of Cumberland for 45 years. I will be retiring in two short days, in the end of the month. I have a, what I feel is a really different perspective than anyone else on the board, because I've been on the opposite side of where I want to be. I want to take kind of a leadership role. I feel like I have a good grasp on what some of the problems and difficulties are in the workforce, the problems we have, and I think I have some ideals that would help the mayor and council bring things maybe a little better for the workers as well as the citizens, because we do work for the city of Cumberland. We work for the citizens of Cumberland. Our job is to serve the citizens. I've been involved in Dapper Dan. I was a coach in Dapper Dan. I've been a Pue football coach. I've been a bowling coach, started programs in bowling at Frankfurt. I'm currently a bowling coach at Fort Hill now. So I am involved in the community. I have many students and bowlers I've put out in the area. Many of them, like they said, had to leave the area to find work. I am an elder in my church, as well as a treasurer in my church, so I have a little experience there. I was president of the union, the local union, and I've negotiated, been involved in the team that negotiated two union contracts with the city. I've had, sat across the table from the administrators and handled many grievances, and I have a good grasp on how the city operates from the outside right now, and I think when I get in there, the many things I can bring to, the council will help us in a more work-uniform way with the workforce, because I believe the workforce is, has a low morale right now. I believe low morale creates low productivity, and I think we need to bring both productivity up as well as the morale of the city employee. Thank you.
Our second question, and the first answer will go to Rock on this one. Focusing just on current economic development projects, what is your opinion of the current economic development projects within the city, and what would you change, if anything?
I would do something about inflation right now, because I think it's slowing things down. I believe in every project that I know of, I feel very positive about it. I supported the development of the Commonwealth Economic Development Corporation, which heads up our economic development efforts, and we have the Rolling Mill Project, finally. I'm glad I'm able to say that. The McMullen Building downtown, soon the M&amp;T Bank Building downtown. I'm very positive about what's going to happen at the Memorial Hospital site. I think I've seen the initial design from one of the developers. There apparently are a couple potential developers for some housing, much-needed market-rate housing at that site. We have other things going on that maybe are unusual, that maybe people think they've never seen, and that is one of my goals when I got into city council, was to try to work more closely with the county and collaborate with the county and use some of their resources. But we have the project on Messick Road. We've bought that property. We already have a tenant to move in there, and it's a very positive thing for our community, and maybe the most we've seen in development in the city limits in quite a while.
Thank you, Rock. Mary?
Thank you. Well, part of the reason I'm running, I think, is that I'm very excited about the scope and the multiple numbers of projects that are going to be coming and are coming and are already in, both in planning and in actual execution. Very excited about our water work that will be happening, and I think that there's been lots of allocation, lots of good planning over several years, and terrific things are happening. But what I'm hearing a lot, and the thing that I would like to see change, is the fact that the people of our town have rather low expectations about these kinds of things, and it's something that we've had in Cumberland since my dad was mayor, really, and before that, if we really want to be honest. And I don't blame the people of Cumberland at all for that. I think that we, as leaders, need to be kind of better at reaching out, better at telling the story of what's supposed to be happening, what's going to happen, and we have many new people coming into Cumberland. We have people who are remote workers. We have retired people. We have new kinds of people coming in and investing for a great lifestyle. So I think we have so many things in place. We have good projects. We need better communication to these people.
And just apologies, this question is one minute. I'll try to do a better job of making sure that I let you guys know in advance. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm happy with what we're talking about, development and everything, but I'm frustrated with the timing of everything. It's been eight, nine years, 10 years, we tore the building down when the first house raised it on the Rolling Mills. But I've watched Frederick every day. When we say we can't get steel here, watch 25 projects a day there. I mean, Heggers Town, it's rolling, it's like it's going crazy, but here somehow, some way, we are last, we are last to get the steel, we're last to get this done and that done. I think things need to speed up. I'm also interested in trying to talk the city into kind of an event and athletic center, conference center, which we need desperately. Every town you go into, it brings thousands of people a week, and it could be put right downtown or somewhere downtown to get people down there. Our youth need it. It could be used for other events as well as conferences and this and that, but there has to be that coming in, event and athletic center.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm excited about all the projects that are happening in the city of Cumberland. Here's a seven-page report from our engineering department of not only the things that you read about in the paper, but so much infrastructure work that's being done or is being planned behind the scenes. And Rock is right, everyone at the city has worked tremendously hard. We're very fortunate to have a great team within the city. We need to do a better job of communication, no doubt about that. In terms of economic development, I have proposed, or am proposing, what we call a one voice initiative. We have the CEDC, the DDC, Allegheny County Economic Development, Tri-County Council, Greater Cumberland Committee, Appalachian Regional Commission, Tourism Office, other towns and cities in the area fighting for money. We need to speak as one voice in Annapolis and Washington, DC, and I suggest maybe we consider appointing a regional economic development czar or facilitator to help coordinate, communicate our efforts, develop priorities in the region as well as the city, and bring everyone together as one. The whole is more powerful than the individual parts, and I think the city of Cumberland can take a lead role in making that happen for our area.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. William?
Everything I've heard said here is good news, like Rock and Joe are saying, there's a lot of going on. The Rolling Mill Project, it's finally off the ground. My question is, why is it, why does it take so long to get things rolling? We seem like we're always in slow motion going. Memorial Hospital, we finally got something going. Why did it take so long? I would like to see us speed up our process. I'd like to see us work better with the county, and Joe just gave you a list of all the organizations. If we all would pull together and go after these small businesses and try to draw them here, Cumberland is a great place. It's a great opportunity. There's land, there's plenty of water. We have a great sanitary system, which is important. I think we have a strong police force. We are unique, and we have a fire department. We should be promoting these things and drawing small businesses here. I think the FedEx warehouse is going to be maybe the things we should need to go after, 90, 100 job businesses, and try to draw them here. I think that our housing market is as roxid as going on, but I don't think we're building single-dwelling houses no more. I think that we need to figure out some way to encourage young people to decide to build a house on their own and stay here in Cumberland. I know there's not a lot of areas for that going on, but I understand Allegheny is, when it's leveled, maybe a place where we can put some single-dwelling houses and go with.
That's one minute. Thank you. Brett?
Yeah, I agree with what Rock had said and what Joe had said, and coming from a construction background, I realize that there's a lot of red tape, there's a lot of getting approvals and changes and change orders, and those things take time, and those things take energy. My concerns, I feel, is if we got a high-speed FiOS internet inside the city limits of Cumberland, it would attract tech companies to this region, which would increase our young people staying here after they get their education at a university. They have a reason to stay in town, because there's North of Grumman, and yeah, FedEx is coming, but it's going to be on the outskirts of town, because it doesn't have the infrastructure for high-speed internet as a FiOS capability, unlike broadband, where broadband is spotty sometimes, and it can break down. It's not as guaranteed, and those tech companies need high-speed internet to do their jobs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next question, and we'll start with Mary on this one, and this is a one-minute question. What is your opinion of the most recent CEDC strategic plan published by RKG Associates?
Well, as I said, I, do it. As I've said, I think that what needs to happen in Cumberland is that there's more strategic planning of communication. I haven't seen that strategic plan. I have looked at some other RKG plans. I think they're great. I think that what we need, we have some terrific planning. It's all over our website. We have information that is accessible to people, but we're not driving them there. We're not informing our population in ways that they can kind of pick up and pick up on the optimism that I'm hearing here. Instead, we have a kind of a community that sees and hears that there's a strategic plan here, there's something else happening there, but they never quite know how to find out what that is. They aren't going to go to a website and spend hours top looking, that's not our people. But I do think we need to reach out a bit in the way that we communicate simply and directly to our population. That could be something like newsletters quarterly coming out of the mayor's office. It doesn't always, it could be a little old-school, I think. That's kind of where a lot of our people are, and they tend to be frustrated, so I think we could do better.
Thank you.
I don't know who RKG is, so. RKG? Yeah, my opinion, the most recent CEDC strategic plan, I'm not really familiar with the CDC. I do know that we need more grant money. I know that. I mean, we are the poorest city in Maryland, although we are the richest state in the country. We need more grant money to get more things done. I mean, you think, I don't know if this answers the question, or if I'm veering off, but we keep throwing money towards Annapolis of Baltimore and Montgomery County. I'd like to see some of that come this way. And about the plan, this is the first I've read something like this, so I'm not privy to the information, or I just don't know how to read that or what to take from it.
Thank you. Joe?
Certainly, I think the RKG strategic plan is a step in the right direction. Obviously, in the city of Cumberland, within our limits, we really don't have a lot of developable land for, you know, large manufacturing or a significant employer. So trying to attract STEM workers, the science, technology, engineering, and math, is an excellent idea. I just recently read an article on HGTV, the Top 50 Cities, and Boulder, Colorado, and Asheville, North Carolina were on that list, and all these cities are larger than Cumberland, but we have a lot in common. High on the list are the reasons of the beauty of the surroundings, the mountains, the streams, the rivers, and outdoor recreation. We need to develop our river project. We need to improve Constitution Park. We need to develop a mountain bike and hiking trails, the skate park, and improve all our recreational fields. But also- But also, and equally as important, we need to continue to develop our arts and entertainment district. And I think that's going to attract people that can telecommute to come to Cumberland as long as we develop those housing to make them want to stay here. A step in the right direction.
Thank you, Joe. William?
I also am not familiar with this current opinion from the strategic plan. I know that the city of Cumberland on a regular basis seems like they go out and have a strategic plan drawed up. Every five years, we have a plan for how we're going to renovate Constitution Park. I think the great thing about the plan is, is we need to follow through with the plans. It seems like we get the plan and we maybe do one or two things, and then everything falls by the side. And then we come back five years and get another strategic plan, and what was in it five years ago is there once again. So whatever, I'm not sure what is planned because I haven't seen it, but I think we need to follow through with it, take the good ideals and run with them in a timely manner. As Joe said, that we have a lot of assets. Constitution Park is a great opportunity for us to build something there, and we haven't done it. For the last 10 years, we've let it run down. So I'm not sure what the plan is, but I think we need, if we're going to go with it, we need to get it and go strong and forward and move forward.
Brett?
Yeah, I'm, well, if you look, as a person that has a business communications degree, and then we know that Jimmy and Bill actually represent the people of Cumberland, clearly that is a communications problem and a communications breakdown that nobody knows what the plans are. I think, like the STEM research stuff that I talked about before, is there's a move to make the Appalachian region, starting from Kentucky all the way to western Pennsylvania, the next Silicon Valley. And I think as a city, we need to look into investing into that situation where we create a STEM program and we create technology jobs that are going to give good-paying jobs for people to be here and also attract people to come here. And that will cause the entertainment section to build. As somebody that has been an entertainer, I know that those things will become, after we start to build those other things, the other things will come on top of them as well. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me. CEDC was created because, to quote the former city administrator, who is retired, what they were doing at the City Hall was a total waste of time. That's one of the first things he told me when I got in office. I've totally supported the CEDC. The RKG study, I went to at least three or four sessions with the gentleman that led that, provided us with the information. One of the things I'm most proud of with this current administration is we have taken these studies that Bill referred to. We've taken them off the shelves, dusted them off, and said, hey, we pay good money for these, let's start seeing what's in them. And we are working off of that plan right now. As far as communication, I'm not sure that's in the question, but the mayor's on almost every week, by design, to address exactly what people are talking about, and that is communication. The RKG stuff was in the paper, it was on the website. It was talked about quite a bit. I don't know, maybe it's not a buzzword that people are going to connect with, but we recognize that. And early on, the mayor came to us and said he wanted to go on the radio every time we had a meeting the following day so he could talk about what's going on. Attendance at our meetings, bad. Not going to kid you.
Thank you, Rock.
Thank you.
Next question, and this is a two-minute question. Job attraction is always a topic during the election cycle, however often there are few details provided other than we need to attract jobs. With detail, what type of businesses and jobs do you think the city should be targeting? And where would you foresee them being located? With the city having limited commercial location options, do you see the city continuing to work with the county to collaborate on these projects?
Yeah, shipping-receiving, number one. I mean, that's with Build 81, Route 15, through Winchester, Martinsburg, that's the way they went. You're not going to keep telling me, no one's going to tell me they can't build a mountaintop. Roanoke, Virginia is way more mountainous than this, and we were about the same size in 1960. There are 120,000 people now. We're down to 19,000. So it could be done. So shipping-receiving. Another thing is this, our housing market is terrible. So we would get people to move back to the area to actually work here if we have actually housing. It's terrible. It needs to be fixed, neighborhoods and all that. But shipping-receiving, high-tech jobs, as someone said, they do have it up on the mountainside on Fairmont, West Virginia, and this and that. But shipping-receiving would be the way to go.
Thank you, Jeremy. Joe?
Well, as I stated about my One Voice Initiative, really, what's good for Allegheny County is good for Cumberland. What's good for Cumberland is good for Allegheny County. And you could say the same thing about all our municipalities within the county and the region. So we need to start there and work together and speak as one voice. Specifically for us, we need to work on doing a better job of marketing ourselves for those STEM workers that can telecommute in Pittsburgh, Baltimore, Washington, DC. And I mean aggressive marketing, not just a thing on the website, but actually telephone calls, marketing, phone calls, all kinds of flyers and things out there to let the people know what's here in Cumberland, to attract those type workers. And we need to set up incubator-type operations for small businesses, much like the new location there on North Center Street.
Thank you, Joe. William?
As I mentioned earlier, I'm confident that the FedEx warehouse job, that is something we can go after. We have 68 east-west access, so we have, I think, a good on-off situation there. I think that the Messick Road area, where the old, that old drive-thru inn was, I think that area could be developed into something really terrific. It's just maybe on the borderline of being out of the city limits, but it's still there. I think 51, where the FedEx warehouse is, we could expand down that way some, down towards the Old Town area, and still stay within the city limits, maybe even, I know there's water and storage down that way, so we could go. The high-tech jobs and the computer jobs and all, we want to keep our kids here. Not all of our kids want to go to college. So we need to bring in jobs that are more manual labor-oriented, not so much college-oriented. Not that they're not educated, but we need to bring in those kind of jobs. Of course, when we recruit them jobs, then we need carpenters, plumbers, then we need to go after those kind of jobs. But they don't require our children going to college. They can learn those trades at Vo-Tech and pick up those trades as we build these buildings. There is limited space in the city for jobs, yes, but there is, just on the outskirts of the city, I believe there's areas that we can expand.
Thank you.
Do you have to still have?
What's it?
I wanted to have Prime Map, or is that?
No, that's, yep.
While I see that, there's really good.
Brett?
Yep. Well, I, like I said before, tech jobs are important, but I'd also like to address the Career Center down on 220. I think that it needs to be restructured with the education program that we're doing there to incorporate a hands-on experience for the young people so that they actually work in the community, helping senior citizens that can't afford to have things renovated in their houses on the outside or the inside, and maybe single moms that are struggling to get by and earn a fixed income. Those kids can come and learn their trade hands-on. As somebody that learned their trade hands-on, like myself, it's the best way that they can learn the responsibilities of what they want to do as far as a trade goes. And instead of just sitting in a classroom and having an instructor teach them things, they can actually experience it hands-on. It also develops them with a civic pride, and they feel a responsibility. And they can say to the people as they drive by, you see Mrs. Smith's house? I worked on that. I did that work for her. And then they start to feel like they're part of the community, and they don't want to leave. They want to stay, and they want to build something here. And they, right now, the young people don't feel like they have a voice and they don't have a future here. And I think that's going to, that connection to that will help them to actually be a part of the community. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Rock?
Yeah, I could talk about this forever from what I've learned in six and a half years. We've been paying attention to quality of life, I'm going to call it, quality of life issues, from everything from downtown to the Memorial Hospital site, anything that makes people on the outside looking in see that we're a more vibrant, vital community. There may be some people that live in our community who believe we are. People that visit here love this city. I just talked to two of them from Houston, Texas, yesterday. I won't go out a little on a limb here. One of the dirty little secrets that I learned, there are jobs here. There are jobs here. And my big concern, and one of the things I learned early on, is our problem is our workforce and having the skills that the new economy requires. The Kelly Springfield plants, they aren't coming back. They're not coming back to Cumberland. And we do have to reinvent ourselves. And one of the emphasis we've had in this administration is to try to work with the county as much as we can and collaborate with them. They have more resources than us. And as Joe said, what benefits one benefits the other. So we've put a lot of effort into work. I walk in and see Dave Caprile, county commissioner, at his shop just about once every two weeks to try to keep those avenues of communication open. We have the Messick Road project that Bill referred to. That's already going to be something. That's a start. And the more we work with the county on everything economically, economic development-wise, the better we're going to be. One of my big disappointments since I've been on city council is we didn't bring together the county and the city's economic development corps. I thought that was the way to go. I can't get into what happened to it, but I think any right-minded person that knew what we were trying to do supported that, and I supported that 100%.
Thank you, Rock.
Thank you.
Well, I think we all agree that regional is very much the way to go in terms of attracting jobs, businesses that will benefit the city. I think to just go a slightly different direction, the moment that we're in with the infrastructure development that's going to happen, the investment that's going to happen, there are going to be people here in Cumberland working on jobs, people who might, in fact, decide this is a pretty good location for their maybe somewhat nomadic way of working. That is somewhat the way many people work in the trades now. We want those people to see the town not just as a distant point for work, but as possibly a place to invest and live. And again, I think that we can use infrastructure as a way to show our young people what those 21st century jobs are. They'll see them. We should be working with our education, Board of Education folks, to let these big jobs become almost outdoor classrooms for the experience of kids to understand what work will mean in the 21st century and begin to kind of grow with that idea. And I agree, there are commercial locations in town, there are jobs in town. It's a little different than it once was, and there are people working from Cumberland who appreciate that quality of life effort that we have been making. So again, I think we have to sort of market ourselves to ourselves, as well as market ourselves aggressively outside so that when someone from outside comes in, they get a good response from the locals that, yes, things are improving, we know what's happening, we know that our community is getting better, and we can tell you why you should stay here. We are responsible to market our city, we, the residents and the citizens. If we don't feel it, if we don't have high expectations that these projects are going to make our life better because we don't really understand what's happening, then we won't get the benefit.
Thank you, Mary. Our next question, and we'll start with Joe this time. City Police Department continues to receive a record number of calls annually while operating short-staffed. What would you propose to recruit and keep police? And secondarily, what can be done that various organizations and community groups are not already doing to help curb crime?
Thank you, Jeremy. That is a very challenging and difficult question. I was recently at the Maryland Municipal League Conference and had representatives from 170-some municipalities within the state of Maryland. And the number-one issue was recruitment and retention of police officers. It's a challenge for large and small organizations, cities, municipalities, all across the state. And it's certainly a challenge for us here in the city of Cumberland. We have an outstanding chief and a leadership team at the police department, as well as officers on the street, and we're very blessed that they do a great job for us. They do their best to try and curb crime and respond as quickly as possible, and I'm very proud of them and will continue to support them. We can't compete with the county. Several of our officers have left to go there based on salary. So it's a challenge that we need to, again, work on from a regional standpoint.
Thank you. And again, this is a AI one-minute question.
Well, Joe touched on an interesting point. I think the big, one of the biggest problems with recruiting is we need to pay our officers more money. I know that's a nasty word, pay more money. But I think we need to pay our police officers more money. They get them here. As far as keeping them, they leave us. We train them, we pay to train them, and then the sheriff department or the prison poaches them from us because they're already trained. So we maybe need to design some kind of agreement when we bring these guys in, that if they go to another law enforcement agency, that more than just the reimbursement of their training money, it's doubled or something to try to discourage the sheriff department and prisons and whoever's poaching our officers to not come after them. Secondly, you said the question about what can we do to various organizations. I think we need, I don't want to call it a hotline, but a neighborhood area where people can watch and they can call, not necessarily the police, but maybe a answering service where they can report a crime and the police can follow up on it. Because a lot of people don't want to make a call because they don't want to be involved. So if we had an outlet where they could
That's time. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Brett?
Yeah, I, as somebody that came and moved to Cumberland and chose to move here because I spent 47 years in Baltimore and surrounding area, watching the city go to a very dark place, I've lost three of my friends to violent crimes where they were the victims of him, and they lost their lives because of it. I've had several friends overdose on fentanyl and heroin. I've seen them go down a dark path. And crime is a huge problem right now because so many people have disrespect for law enforcement. And you have to remember, my father-in-law was a decorated officer in the Baltimore City Police Department, and I can tell you that from his experiences, it's a thankless job. And money is definitely a factor, but I think the respect of the community is a much more way to keep officers here. And I think civic pride is the way to curb that, along with getting jobs and getting people to do things. Because like my grandmother said, idle hands are the devil's workshop, Brett, find something to do.
Thank you. Rock?
Boy, who wants to be a police officer today, the way they're being treated some places? God bless them that anybody enters that realm. I can say that if someone comes in, they're trained, they leave, they do have to pay a penalty, there's an officer that's going to have to pay us back $40,000, and the city will go after that. We had what I would term excellent negotiations with the police union, very little rancor, and gave them a pay raise. We gave them premium pay from the ARPA money that came from the federal government. The chief has told me that the fleet of vehicles is the best now, due to our administration, than he's seen it since he's been a police officer in Cumberland. He is an excellent chief. Our fire chief is an excellent fire chief. We've gotten, what, a new hook and ladder, new ambulance. So we have paid attention to public safety, and I don't want to say we've written a blank check, but we understand the climate of the times on this council. And if they bring us needs, we have confidence in them that those needs are important.
Thank you, Rock. Mary?
Thank you. Yes, I, this is a moment, I'll drop in the word neighborhood, which is something that I'm very interested in. And I think our police need to have their own agency, in a way, in terms of how to build relationships with people in the town. If your job is difficult because of how people treat you, then, you know, you can possibly improve that, and it's the people, the cops themselves, who, you know, need to say how they think they can do that. they think they can do that. I know that I believe the chief is working on a citizen police effort for people to learn how the department works and even be a little involved in that. The gentlemen who have been working on the youth center downtown are doing that kind of thing voluntarily. I mean, police are people who want to serve and will go out of their way. And I think that one thing that I will do if I am fortunate enough to be on the council is to really actively try to re-energize the neighborhood program and involve law enforcement in that so that people do know. I think in general, our population has a good opinion of the police. I have a neighbor who also moved from Baltimore, a young man who...
That's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jimmy?
Yeah. It's hard with 53.3% of Cumberland city residents pay taxes. That's it. And so we have to get people coming in town that taxpayers pay so we can get more police officers and this and that. This is a quick, in the 20 years prior to this year, we had 11 homicides in Cumberland. The last 18 months, we had seven homicides. So and then we had 108% uptake and no point deaths in the last year. I mean, I'm pro EMT, pro police. We need to find a way to get the more money. But the best way to get the more money is get great citizens moving in and have taxpayers coming here. And so that's where I stand. And there's so many things I could say right here on the police. They do get treated unfair a lot of times. And get them like they do in schools and everything, get them, the kids to see them. And I think will help out in big ways.
Thank you, Jimmy. Our next question, and we'll start with William with this question. And it will be a one-minute question. Amenities such as shopping, dining, and family-friendly activities are often cited as missing in Cumberland. What ideas do you have that you believe could come to fruition in the next four years if you are elected to office? And who or what entity is responsible for making them happen? Maybe we'll go, that's kind of a loaded question. It's probably a 90-second question with a 60-second answer. So we'll go ahead and give you guys 90 seconds on that question.
Well, one of the things I had thought about is was what Brett mentioned was we need to work more with the Career Center. And also, as he was saying, have our people more involved in that. I also think that we need to expand our neighborhood areas to like, we have a lot of vacant properties and stuff that are long to the city. We have Fairmont Playground, Ridgeville Playground, all these playgrounds that are vacated. We need to put them to some use that we could draw people to them. And we, right now, we have like community gardens there. And they're not really catching on. But they are there. Some people are gardening there. I think that we need to get the neighborhoods together more. And I think those are ways to do it. They were growing their gardens there. I think that we need to strongly, strongly recruit more as we talk about jobs here. I think the biggest thing we can do is, and Rock touched on this, we need to work with the county economically. And I agree with, I don't understand why that failed, but we need to work together with the county. If we can, and if we can get with the county and work on everything together as one, then I think we can move forward with a lot of things. I don't, I think the responsibility for making things happen is, is the mayor and council have to be the leaders for this. And we have people, mayor and council have hired, have people hired. We have an economic crew or economic people hired. But we need, the mayor and council need to oversee them. And when it seems like things are not moving, maybe push them a little bit further and try to...
That's time. Thank you. Brett?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to say this. As somebody that lived in a town and I watched it decline for 47 years, if I was in office, I would like to say that I am a person, my character is the fact that I like to get the impossible, I like to make the impossible possible. I don't want to see Cumberland turn into another dundalk. I saw what happened when Bethlehem Steel left and Lever Brothers left and GM Plant left. My town declined drastically. And it circled a drain for many years. And now it's to the point where it may never recover back. Even as much money as they throw into it, it may never come back. And I don't want to see that happen to this place. This place is a very magical place. It's a special place where people care about each other. I would like to promote civic pride in the community and try to get our young people into being, feeling like they're part of the community and working together. I just don't want to see that that happened to this town like it's happened to so many other smaller towns across the United States. Thank you.
I have to come back to my term quality of life. That means a lot of things to different people. But it's simply looking at all the positives that we have and building on them and also looking at the things that maybe we've never had and we need to add. The River Walk, looking at the question, who's responsible for it? Well, all of us are responsible for it, but what an addition that would be. The River Walk, let me mention what's happened that we've supported the development of the McMullen Building, which will have 14 apartments down there, offices, and probably a restaurant. So we have more people downtown. The M&amp;T Bank Building, we've been really heavily supporting the gentlemen that are trying to make that purchase. And if you ever see their design, it'll blow you away. You'll think you're in Philadelphia or someplace. The Carver Center for Kids is a big deal to us, but we want it done right. The mayor is doing it right. And he's, I've promised him my support as long as it's done right. And I think we have an excellent board to do that. Mary mentioned the Apes Group down on Center Street. We've supported Alan Zap, Jeremy Hedrick, our police officers who have devoted an untold amount of volunteer hours to that. We've supported the new STEM program over at St. Peter and Paul that Mike Fiskus is involved in. I'm on the board at the Salvation Army. I can tell you, we support what they do down there for kids. The Old Manhattan Building looks like with our support is going to come back online. And the Messick Road thing I mentioned, East Side School, those homes up there, that's going to come online. That's not a dream. If you see that coming by there, it's just about ready to open.
That's time, Rock.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Goes fast.
It does. Well, my specific idea that I would love to see come to fruition is a very big and enhanced emphasis on our neighborhoods. It's already happening. You can see it if you look at the website for neighborhood initiatives. We have it in the structure of our city code. We've had it for many years. It kind of died out a little bit and maybe totally actually, and it has come back in some neighborhoods, but not all and not many. And I think the reason is that we don't incentivize the people in the neighborhoods to think about what they want in the way of socializing, benefits for recreation. We might suggest that they come to a meeting because we like to have them start a neighborhood association. None of us want to go to more meetings. But you know, if we give them a little incentive, like maybe you could use the new portable stage that the city bought and has been using downtown and wants to reach out, wants to get that to become a bigger citywide opportunity for events, get a neighborhood involved in putting on an event. And then from that, organization can grow, interest can grow. We get very few people downtown when you look at the number of people all over the city. And we need to energize those people kind of where they live. Because many of them, no matter how many wonderful things we have downtown, just don't, it's not on their radar. They don't come downtown. But there are thousands of them. And it would be possible to do that model of neighborhood development really across the city. And I would love to see that I've made some difference in that in four years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jimmy?
As I said, mumbling probably at the beginning, Event and Athletic Center, Conference Center downtown, you're talking about bringing people downtown. I'm talking about thousands by the day. I don't know if anyone here had daughters or cheerleading competitions, kids AU basketball, hunting and fishing shows. It goes on and on, car shows. It's indoor all the time. And I've seen it in towns, smallest bridge, 4700 people, 155 teams from 26 states come in and play. They stay in hotels downtown. That will get the most people downtown. That's what I'm looking forward to in my first four years of getting there, getting that done. And also maintain that the neighborhoods we got now are safe and make sure they stay clean and the sidewalks repaired and all that, and the good neighborhoods. Because if you lose the good neighborhoods, I don't want them to turn to bad neighborhoods. Because you got to maintain the good neighborhoods you have.
I'm not going to repeat everything that Rock said about the tremendous development that's occurring in Cumberland. It's exciting. I think one of our key jobs on, as members of the city council is to be a cheerleader for that and to convince people, even the naysayers, that there's lots of good things happening in Cumberland. We love this city. In terms of Jimmy's idea regarding a regional recreational center, it's an excellent idea. And in fact, I serve on the Frostburg State University Foundation Board. And there are plans and discussions that are down the road that have occurred to put such a center in the Frostburg Route 36 kind of area. So hopefully that comes to fruition. But again, it's a regional thing. What's good for the region is good for Cumberland. What's good for Cumberland is good for the region. What I think we need to do is, it's people like Dave Love and the North Center Street Festival Committee, Barb Buell and Dave Williams at the Delville Pub Crawl, Ed Taylor and his group with the Cumberland Historic Cemetery Organization, Tiffany Fisher and the Juneteenth Celebration Committee, Jackie McKenzie and the Pride Festival, Cheyenne Jenkins and the Skateboard Committee, Matt Miller and the J.C.'s with the Wing Off, Jeff Hedrick, Taco Di Maio, Sandy Seville at the DDC, Ed Mulaney and the Let's Beautify Group, the Salvation Army, and so many others that really make the difference for Cumberland. What I want to do is help individual citizens help make a difference for Cumberland.
Thank you, Jim. Our next question, and we'll start with Brett for this question. In August 2020, the city completed a study of the housing inventory within the city. The study identified a deficiency in workforce and/or market rate housing. What is your thoughts on the results of the study? And if elected, what would your plan be to address the shortage of turnkey housing for working-class people that businesses are looking to attract and recruit to our area? And this will be a two-minute response.
As somebody that has a construction background, I think I've also worked with Habitat for Humanity in downtown Baltimore. And I spent six weeks working with the Lakota Tribe in the Midwest, building houses there. Seeing the people actually working with contractors and people that are volunteering their time makes them feel like they have some kind of worth to it. And they have, they have skin in the game. And it gives them a sense of pride in the house that they're having. If we have houses that are run down and disheveled and just shells of what they used to be, and we have the Career Center where those young people need to learn how to do those trades, and we get tradesmen that volunteer their time to teach those young people, and we get the people that are interested in buying those homes, I think that would create an opportunity where those houses don't get lost and become just a vacant lot. Because in Baltimore, I don't know if anybody's ever been down to Baltimore and traveled into the neighborhoods that are oppressed and just basically broken down. There are, you can go blocks and blocks and just see patches of overgrown grass where there used to be rows and rows of homes. And they just flatten them and leave them lie. And they never put them back. They never built anything in. And they take that beautiful architecture, those buildings that were a century old and just destroy it and just get rid of it. And it disappears. And those things could be used for people with, that don't have the opportunity to own their own home. And it could give them the sense of pride of having their own home for the first time. We could work it out where we can work with a bank to help them get a loan, a low-interest loan for them to work their way back to making themselves feel like they are capable. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Yeah, thank you. Housing is maybe up there with jobs as one of the big issues we face. You're going to bring people here, where are they going to live? Part of that is, addressing that is downtown. There are a lot of young people, I'm told, by a lot of young people, they prefer to live downtown in apartments and places they can walk. We're working on that, as you can see, with the McMullen Building, the M&amp;T Building, the apartments on, at Center Street Methodist Church. Those are all very positive things. But our biggest need in housing, if you think about it, you know our area, if you wanted to come in and put in something tomorrow, where would you do that? Therefore, what we've done as a council is we've made it a priority to remove blight. And I'm proud to say that we have removed a record amount of blighted properties just in, and I'm not taking full credit for that. I promised I wouldn't do that. But in the six years I've been there, I'm amazed at the amount of blighted properties we've removed. You just saw that up there on Old Town Road the other day. That's what we have to do. We have to remove these houses and have infill and have houses that people want to buy. A lot of people don't want to, younger people don't want to buy homes anymore. They want to come in, they want to rent a nice place because they don't stay in one place as long as they used to. And we have to make that transition from what we've had into that. And that was part of the ARKE KG study. And practically every report we get back talks to us about housing. And we are working on that vigorously. Is my time up? I didn't get it. Okay, thank you. It seemed like I went long that time. These things go together. If you remove the blight, you improve the neighborhood. If someone comes in there and we sell them, we take the property, and this has really been exciting, the number of properties the city's been able to get for a dollar or nothing and then return them to the tax rolls. Just happened with, two weeks ago, 52,000 bucks we sold a property for. We got to start somewhere. We started from a deep, deep hole here when the Kelly closed. You all know that.
Thank you, Rock.
Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you. When I talk to people around town, those are still the two things that you hear, street problems and blight. And blight is sort of perennial. And I agree, you all have done a lot. It's been a process where we are seeing some of that disappear, but it's also still kind of gaining on us. It's kind of like an invasive weed. And I think that the answers that I would give relate to some other points that I've made. One is that neighborhood pride idea, the idea of having a little bit of organization in neighborhoods so that we're getting feedback, better feed, excuse me, better feedback and more engaged feedback on problem properties. And I would plan to be very involved if I am elected with the Historical Commission, the Historical Preservation Commission, because we do still have a beautiful historic housing stock and many places that can be renovated. And it is a shame to see things simply go to decay until they have to be removed. And I think we should support Historic Preservation in our area for a housing solution. And I also think that we do have these young people coming in. And yes, they have a different way of living. They don't necessarily want to drive everywhere. But we may see some, and again, I know some in my neighborhood, they keep popping up where they've been here in an apartment, in an old house they never dreamed they would live in. And they're now thinking about, oh, maybe I could buy something here. So again, those people have to be found and sort of cultivated. We need to have good, we have good realtors who can help bring that along. I think that, again, it's a combination of neighborhood organizations and engagement and really thinking about what makes a good quality of life. Streets, eliminating blight, as well as having the kind of housing that attracts people here in the first place, that sense of history.
Jimmy?
Yeah, speaking on this, we've probably had five or six doctors leave the area in the past five, six months because of the housing situation. We don't have the planned communities. We don't have the shopping they want. They don't have the townhouses with the restaurants and this and that, whether it be Chipotle's bows. They want to be walking distance to the fitness centers and this and that. And so elected, I would push for that, you know, Maryland Avenue District, it's not, keep it in town much as you can. I know some of it's going to be east of town or outside the county. But redevelop and redesign some neighborhoods. Some of these neighborhoods are shot. There's no coming back from it, you know, whether it be Gothy Street or coming up Williams, Baltimore Street. Some of them had to just be redeveloped, redesigned. And the way to go, she said, these kids go to college, whether it be College Park or wherever, Furman University, and this is what they see, clean. Your bar seat here, you walk two blocks over, you're back in your bar, you know. So that's the way I would like to see it, and I envision it.
Thank you, Jim.
The Planning and Zoning Commission, along with employees at the city, are currently working... working on the neighborhood program for the city of Cumberland, revitalizing that and developing that. And we'll be seeking neighborhood input very shortly. I recently had the pleasure and opportunity to meet with Roger Campos, the Assistant Secretary of the Office of Housing and Community Development for the state of Maryland. He was here along with the developer, and we were talking about several properties, including the Memorial Hospital, the soon-to-be-available Allegheny High, old Allegheny High School site, and some other sites within the city that we either own or will own. And we talked about the challenges that we have to develop housing here. Let's face it, our contractors in the area really, since there hasn't been a whole lot of new construction, we don't have a whole lot of new contractors building new houses. So our prices are a little bit challenging for development for some of these places when you compare it to a Baltimore City or a Baltimore County where volume, because they're doing it in volume, they can charge less. So we talked to Roger about the possibility of the state helping to subsidize some of that difference so that we can get these developers in here, that they can make a reasonable profit. The state will help us, the city will kick in a portion of that and get these houses underway.
Thank you, Joe. William?
I think that the city's doing a good job of taking the blighted properties down. For the most part, though, those lots are not going to see a house built there, or they're not going to be reused as a housing. So there, once we take them down, they're off the market, and we sell them for a dollar or whatever we can just to get them back on the tax rolls, which is a good thing because we're taking the blight down. I think our, where we have to look at the housing is, is Memorial Hospital, the East Side Project over there where the school is, Allegheny, and we'll have to look at condos. If we're gonna try to recruit tech people in, I'm not saying that not all tech people, but they would like the ideal of living in a managed apartment where somebody else is gonna shovel the snow and mow the grass, and all they have to do is pay a fee to have those things done and not be involved in those things. As far as, like you said, the price, we haven't built very many houses in Cumberland recently. And the contractors that are here can get a pretty good price because there are so few. And if you call a contractor to do some remodeling, it might be months before you get them there. So we need to get some competition with the housing as far as construction goes. But I think our, the way we're gonna have to go is use the vacancies we have, because we don't have a lot of land in the city, and go with the condo styles. And as they said, the apartments downtown are going well because people want to walk everywhere. But I also think they don't want the obligation of the snow and the grass and everything. So I think that's the way we have to go.
Thank you. Moving on to our next-to-last question, and our last question will be our closing statements. This will be a one-minute response. The CSX bridges continue to be an issue for residents on the west side of Cumberland. What is your opinion of the current strategy enacted by the city to deal with this issue? And what, if anything, would you do differently if elected? And this question will start with Rock.
Well, thank you. Was that contrived? The bridges, it's awful, isn't it? I talked to Governor Hogan a couple of years ago personally at an event about it. He told me that he's never seen a group like CSX in his life to try to deal with. The problem, I don't know how many times I say this, the problem is not local. The problem is, if you want to call it that, the Congress gave railroads a lawful lot of independence to operate a long, long time ago because of interstate commerce and the need to transport goods. It's almost like they're above the law. We did join with the county to bring suit at the Service Transportation Board for the Washington Street Bridge. I don't have any idea how that's gonna turn out, that's still in litigation. We do have, I can tell you, we do have the Fayette Street Bridge. We know it'll be 6 million bucks. The federal share of that will be 4.8 million. And CSX, we've been able to negotiate that they will pay the balance, okay? The design work is on time, and cross your fingers that we have that one done relatively shortly. The Cumberland Street Bridge, total cost is 4.6 million bucks. The city's share will be paid by the federal bridge program. That money comes to the state and then to the county, again, working with the county, which is so important, partnering with these people. The county is allocating the money to take care of our share of that. And again, CSX, big-hearted as they are, are agreeing to pay 20%. So two of those three bridges, things look really, really good finally. Somebody said things moved too slowly. Nobody has to tell the city council, you almost come out of meetings and you want to hide your face because people are looking at those bridges. I live on west side. I feel horrible that they're able to get away with that. But I can tell you, I don't know of any stone that still needs to be unturned. We've talked to Congressman Trone.
That's time, Rock.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Worked on the federal level.
I think I asked another 90-second question with a 60-second answer, so we'll give you guys 90 seconds on that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, I live on the west side as well and recall going to a meeting, I think it was nearly a decade ago, with my now-deceased father to hear about the problem and to hear it presented and to know at that point that this is going to be almost impossible to get to work. And it would have to be something that is slow. And so again, I'm so glad to hear things are moving along. I think many of us have a sense that they are. But I think, again, the strategy needs to be applied to the people in the west side who, you know, maybe you say they should have heard the mayor on the radio, they should have heard this, they should have checked Facebook. I think we need to be reaching out directly to citizens with some simple, straight stories on what kinds of things are happening to their bridges, to their streets, to their sidewalks. There are lots of plans. You can find them all over the website, but where are we on them? It doesn't have to be that detailed to give people a little confidence periodically that something is moving along. How do you do that? Maybe you just start putting it on paper and dropping it in the mail to them now and then. We're doing a postcard. I think we need to be a little more strategic and straight and direct with our citizens. And I think we'd have a lot more cooperation and better attitudes and better engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Jimmy?
Well, it sounds like to me, if this is gonna be drawn out, and this goes to court, and we don't win, we're on the hook for it. So me, I mean, county, city, state funded, we're gonna have to get it done. I mean, taxpayers are over there. They pay a lot of taxes over Washington Street. So it'll be city, state, federal, whatever money we can get, because it sounds like it's gonna be us, not CSX, to me.
Thank you. Joe?
I think Rock stated it very eloquently. It's been a real challenge. Back in the 1800s, Congress gave the railroads way too much power. I understand the reasons why at the time, but it's certainly frustrating here. And it's not only Cumberland, they've done the same thing to the city of Baltimore and other places throughout the country where they drag their feet. But we need the railroads, what can I say? And they're a large employer for our community, and we're blessed to have the jobs. We have sued over the Washington Street Bridge. There are plans in place for both Fayette and Cumberland, Cumberland being the first one to come online. It takes way too long. That's something I've learned in the last nine months is, it's very frustrating for me, coming from business where we'd develop a plan, we'd execute on the plan, and we'd make it happen. In government, it's a three- to five-year minimum to get anything accomplished, and that's frustrating. But it is what it is. We are working very hard. We're also working, and the possibility of having a community liaison within the city of Cumberland to help with those neighborhood questions and communication is part of the plan for the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. William?
The bridge has been an issue for quite a while. I think one of the reasons that, and I'm not blaming the mayor in any way, because I understand this is a slow process, I believe one of the reasons the mayor won, the mayor won his election was that they, everybody, a lot of people thought when he come on board, he had an end with the railroad and things would go a lot smoother. From what I'm hearing, that hasn't really been a good connection with the railroad, that they're very difficult to deal with. As far as the strategy goes, I know that we have joined the county in suing the railroad. I know that's gonna be a long, hard battle. They can probably outspend us on lawyers and everything else and tie us up in court for years to come. Rock said they're gonna pay a percentage of 20% of the one on the bridges or something, so I consider that progress. If the state's kicking in some and the city's paying, so we are making, it sounds like we are making a little progress. It's a difficult thing for, if you live over that way, that you've been, had to live with that situation for such a long time. And I'm sure there's a lot of frustration over there. I think that what we're hearing from Rock and Joe is that things are moving forward. Maybe that needs to be put out there more and more so more people understand that there is slight progress being made, no matter how small. Because I think a lot of people just think that the city's not doing anything, and because it's taking so long to get any progress at all. I think the bridges are vital for people who live there. I think we gotta do something. If it means suing the railroad, which I know we have gone to court, we'll just have to go to court, and hopefully we can be more aggressive in court. Maybe we need to get better lawyers, like the railroad can afford better lawyers.
That's time. Thank you. Brett?
Well, I think I have a brilliant idea. Jimmy, how many people live in Cumberland? 19,640 people. I say we hold our first and bring back the good old-fashioned train robbery. Why not? What can they do? We just stop the train from going. That's what I say.
Thank you very much.
For the information part of it, if I could just add, as far as communication, about when I first got on council, I said...
You say you know, is the, okay, okay.
For our final question, and we'll start with Mary, we're gonna allow a two-minute closing statement to wrap up. Thank you.
Well, I think it comes down to a few things in terms of what I hear from people and the things that we've discussed right here today. It's streets, it's blight, it's the bridges. And all of these things are the neighborhoods. And I think that our priorities in terms of making things visible that we want to see, we know that they're happening. But if we can't express that and bring that somewhat to life for the people who live here, we have one very bad thing that can happen in our town, which is that we don't sell ourselves. We pay other people to make outreach and calls and videos and show what a great place we are, and we are. But if they come here and the first person that they see near the railroad bridge says, this has been going on for 10 years, we're never gonna have bridges here, look at the streets, look at what we've got here, things just don't happen, things happen slowly. That's the low expectations that I was talking about in the very beginning. We have a community of people who have seen things move slowly and haven't known why, or seen things not happen, and haven't quite grasped why. And we need to begin to kind of help them to buy in a little bit to what Cumberland is. And that has to go down to better communication where we don't blame the people who don't know what's going on. We figure out ways to reach out a little bit better, to make things a little bit clearer, and to kind of make people be their own marketers, really, and improve their own feelings about their town. Because most of us will say that we love our town and that we think it has lots of potential. So communication and neighborhoods are the two things that I really will want to stress and focus on. And also, I will be a councilperson who shows up to know what's going on. You have to show up at not only the council meetings, but commissions, talk to staff, learn and get to know people and build relationships. And that'll really be my first step going in, is to know those departments, those managers, those commissions with volunteers and people who are the most...
That's time.
...civic-minded. They need to be a part of the conversation, as I know that they are, with hopefully all of our elected representatives. So I will appreciate your vote. I will hope for an opportunity to do something different and see a very pivotal moment happen here in Cumberland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Jimmy?
First, thanks for having me and all of us. Yeah, thank you, sir. Thanks for having us. And kind of unsettling when you see the TV cameras and you're talking, you're in mics and everything. And I hope it's something I get used to, and I hope I get that vote July 19th. But we could do better. Like she said, everyone says they love this town. Now, I know this town. I see this town. I speak to everyone in this town. I know what this town needs. I know every alley, every street, every sidewalk. It's, I live in, like I said, all sides of the territory, you know. I just want to make sure that Cumberland gets better, because I keep, I keep hearing all the time, people make fun of Cumberland. Well, if Cumberland's this bad, people are gonna be, if Cumberland gets better, first of all, it makes France feel better, it makes Frostburg better, it makes, we want to be the hub of the area. It makes all mineral county get better. So it gets frustrating to hear Little Baltimore or this and that, I gave you the crime statistics, we're sixth in the state, blah, blah, blah. We could do better, we could work harder. I know that me personally, I don't think anyone can outwork me, that's just how I am and how I feel. And I know the people here. And so I'm gonna say this, thank you for having me, and I hope I get your vote July 19th.
Thank you, Jimmy. Joe?
Thanks again to the Chamber and Allegheny Media for hosting this in Allegheny College. We all know the local issues and challenges, economic development, better paying jobs, replacement of the west side bridges, street paving, lower taxes, lower crime, get drugs off the streets, increase our population, improve tourism. But there's no quick and easy fixes. Improvements and change require thoughtful planning, diligent implementation and management, fiscal responsibility, and gathering the financial resources necessary. We must work together as a region to improve things for everyone. Cumberland is very fortunate to have a great and dedicated staff of city workers. I thank Bill for his 45 years of dedicated service. And our department heads and administrators are doing an outstanding job. It's my job to help them help our citizens. We depend on financial support from the federal and state government. I don't just talk about the issues, but I've worked very hard over many years in many volunteer positions to make a difference in the community I love. I would ask that you vote for the candidate that you think can do the best job to try and get those dollars from the federal and state government. And I believe that I have the education, experience, and know-how to make that happen. I appreciate your vote on July 19th, and I thank everybody for their interest and openness and willingness to work in the city of Cumberland. And Mary, I hear you loud and clear about communication, and we'll get to work on that tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. William?
I think that I have, my years of experience with the city gives me an opportunity that maybe the current man, like Joe said, he knows the manager. I've worked with most of the managers. I know, I'm their friends right now, and I know them, I've worked with them, and I have experience with the public works part of it. I think we need a strong police force, and we need to figure out a way to keep our police officers. I think we need to keep our fire department fully staffed, and we need to promote that. We want to become an area drawing in for outdoor recreation. We need to push that. We have some very fine facilities. We have the Mason Complex. We have Constitution Park. We need to push those kind of things and use those as tools to try to draw some small businesses here. Employers want to have the education. We need to have a strong educational area. They, the area itself is down a little bit. The area itself is down a little bit. Everyone, I think, is a little depressed with things going on. We need to somehow boost the morale of everybody in the city. And that's not necessarily the mayor and council's job, but we can be part of that in the neighborhoods. And everything we do, or everything the mayor and council do and the city does, is to promote the city and make it a better place. I lived in Cumberland all my life. I never wanted to leave Cumberland. I want everyone that lives in Cumberland, who goes to school here and graduates, to want to stay here and be in the city of Cumberland. And we need a lot of things for that. We need jobs and housing. And I want to be part, I hope to be part of that, that we can move forward and get those things here and get those things accomplished where we can keep our young people here, so that parents don't have to see their kids go to college and get a degree, but have to go somewhere else to work and go travel, see their grandkids. I want them to be able to walk next door or down the street to see their grandkids. Like I said, I love Cumberland. I want to see it, it'll never be the Kelly again, like Rock said, we're never going to get another Kelly. But I want to see Cumberland grow and become something of what it used to be, and people be proud to say, oh, I live in Cumberland. And I want to be part of that. So, if anything I said tonight sparked your interest, I appreciate you, I greatly appreciate your, appreciate your vote on July 19th. And I just want to be a part of the city moving forward and make it great again. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett?
Well, it's that time of the night. I appreciate everybody. I'm the only son of a printer and an art teacher who graduated from Maryland Institute as well. And I came from a very creative family, and I worked hard starting at the age of nine. I've worked hard my whole entire life, and unlike everybody here who's born, lucky enough to be born here, my wife and I chose to come here and be here for the rest of our lives. And I think this is a special place, and I want to do my part and give back to the community as much as I can. And I bring a little bit of humor to it. You know, we can't take ourselves too seriously, because then we forget that we're all human. And I believe that the future is now, Cumberland, and I say take a chance on change and vote for me come July 19th. Thank you.
Thanks to everyone who came tonight. Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks to the Chamber, and to all of you that put your name out there. It takes courage, it takes some money, and it takes putting yourself out there. And I appreciate that. I think it's an excellent thing to see six people up here. This is the part where I guess you have to talk a little bit about yourself. I've been a good city councilman, I'm not going to kid you. I have to say that. I've worked hard. I was talking to my wife the other day, and I don't think there's one citizen's complaint that I didn't respond to. May not have always had the answer they wanted, but I honest to goodness don't think I missed one. If I did, I apologize for that, because that's been a priority of mine. These are the people that voted me in the office. I felt it as a special obligation and really humble. I was the top vote getter by quite a bit back in 2018, and you might think I was just thrilled by that, I was, but I also went, wow, you know, that really means something in terms of what I owe the citizens. I promise to continue to serve honestly, openly. If you ask me a question, I will give you an answer. I'll try to, like Joe said, I will try to see if we can do better with communication. I want to say a little bit about practical stuff. We have five new businesses just downtown that have opened up in the last, what, six, eight months? So, we're on the move. We were able to find close to $1 million to do paving of our streets. And one of the things that everybody in this room probably has had them experience is at Constitution Park. If you grew up here, you probably spent time there. This is one where I will say I'm going to toot my own horn. I really have led the charge in the city for six years to get improvements to Constitution Park. The new city administrator came in, I took him up there, he said, you're right, we need to get going on this. I think come October, we're going to be pumping something like $600,000 into Constitution Park, and that's beyond the swimming pool. We want to add more amenities for the kids, but also to clean up and improve what's already there. It's a gem, and it's been neglected, and I've, that's the kind of leadership I've tried to provide our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rock, and thank you to all of you for taking the time to be here tonight to talk to us and talk to the voters. On behalf of the Chamber, I want to wish a very big thank you to Ryan and Katie Berneman from Allegheny Media and to Chuck Dickens at WFWM. Their partnership in these forums is critical and vital. We could not do these without them. And also, a big thank you to ACM for hosting us in their building. For all the voters, early voting begins July 7th and will run through July 14th. Election Day is July 19th, and you can find any more, or more information on the web at elections.maryland.gov. Also, these candidate forums will be rebroadcast on WFWM on the radio. The three candidate forums that were held tonight, they will all be broadcasted at 6:00 PM, and the first forum of the evening was District 1A, House of Delegates. It will be broadcast on Tuesday, July 12th. Board of Ed Forum will be broadcast on Wednesday, July 6th. And this forum that you just heard will be broadcast on Monday, July 11th. And again, that's 6:00 PM on WFWM. And again, we thank Chuck and WFWM for their partnership. On behalf of the Chamber, it was my privilege to be your moderator tonight. We encourage all of the voters out there to be involved, to make informed voting, and to make your voice heard by voting on July 19th. Thank you all, and I wish you all a pleasant evening.